All right, Chair Owens, you are now live. You may begin your meeting.
Very good. We will call to order the virtual special meeting Wednesday, April 28th, 2021, 7 o'clock. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Danny Hume.
Present.
Commissioner William Silva. Commissioner Dave Owen, Dave Evans, sorry.
I wish I was in Owens, present.
Commissioner Arlington La Micah.
Present.
Commissioner Keith Dodson.
Present.
Vice Chair Michael Spalletta. And Chair John Owens.
Okay, before you do me, let's go ahead and get Mr. Silva signed in. He just signed on.
Okay, thank you.
And I am present.
Thank you. And the record does show that Commissioner Silva is present.
Yeah, and we'll get on that on the, on the minutes here in a minute because I believe he came in the same and they didn't count him in last time we were on. I think the April 14th. You were on the road and then you came in and then you were at home later. Okay, anyway, review of agenda items. If there's any items that have rose after the 72-hour posting deadline, this is the point in the meeting where a vote may be taken to add the item to the agenda. A two to three majority vote is required. Do we have anything, Dominique?
There were no items brought to the attention of staff for the addition to the agenda.
Very good, thank you. Public comment, members of the public wishing to address the commission on matters within the jurisdiction of the city of Seaside but not on the agenda may do so during the public comment period for up to two minutes. Public comments on specific agenda items are heard under that item. For the public record, please state name.
Members of the public wishing to make public comment, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling in from a phone. Chair, there are not any members of the public wishing to make comment at this time.
Very good. We will close public comment and go for approval of minutes for April 14, 2021 minutes. And like I said, the only thing that I saw on it that was that absent was Spalletta and Silva.
I think I was also not at that meeting.
No, they have you excused.
Okay.
Yeah, and I did arrive. I was a few minutes late and was doing it for my car initially, but then got to my house afterwards.
And I attest to that also. So if we can move Mr. If we can fix those, I think then we could go ahead and approve them if staff's willing to fix that.
Yes, please include it in your motion.
Okay. Do I have a motion on the minutes, commissioners?
I'll move to approve the minutes with the addition of my late arrival and inclusion in the meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, Dominique, do we need to do a roll call vote for that?
Yes, sir, we do for a virtual meeting.
Okay.
Commissioner Hun.
Aye.
Commissioner Silva.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner La Micah.
Aye.
Commissioner, Commissioner Dodson.
Excused.
And Chair Owens.
Aye.
Your motion passive.
Very good. Okay. So approval of minutes for February 24th, 2021?
I only show we need to approve April 14th. I think we approved that one last one, last two weeks ago.
Yeah. Can you tell me, Dominique, why we have that on here? Or is it just a typo?
On the posted agenda, item six for approval of minutes only reflects approval of April 14th.
Okay, I see now. A was February 24th. Mr. Evans noted changes on page eight.
Okay.
Okay, my, my bad. Okay, business items. Board of Architecture Review Application Number BR 2101 and Use Permit Application UP.
I think you're on last, last meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's the old agenda where.
Sorry about that, guys. All right, here we are. Local coastal permit?
Yes.
I'm still showing that the 14th. We just approved the 14 minutes, right?
Yes. That was my understanding. And we're on the 28th now?
Correct, but I'm not seeing.
We're, we're on page nine of the packet.
Thank you, sir. Okay, local, April 28th, local coastal permit, coastal development permit, LCP 21-01 and Board of Architecture Review Application BAR 2104, applicant and owner, Peninsula Regional Park District and property owner. I'll let staff take it from there.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
I, I can.
Wonderful.
Yes.
All right, so this is a coastal development, LCP, local coastal plan, permit for a new playground structure going into an existing, expansion of existing playground structure within the Laguna Grande Park. So we have the location pulled up here. It falls within the Laguna Grande Park area. There's an existing playground here. It is surrounded by existing park to the northeast, the south, and the southeast as well, and the west, and then to the north and northeast, we have some residential and then the DMV and City Hall, so public facilities. This is within the local coastal plan. So we have the coastal boundary referenced here on the maps. And so here's the DMV. This is where proposed development is. It falls within an area that is a residential park that is the use and the habitat. It is labeled as in the coastal, but it also has an actual coastal zoning of coastal parks and open space, as you can see by the map on the right. So it's coastal parks and open space approximately right here is where the park is. Sorry, I should go over coastal zoning. So we do have a local coastal plan. This was adopted by the Coastal Commission in 2013. And any city which has an adopted LCP can make motions on specific items in compliance with their local coastal program rather than having to take it to the Coastal Commission. So our LCP consists of two major parts, the land use plan and the coastal implementation plan, the LUP and the CIP. An LUP designates kinds, location, and the intensity of land and proposed water uses. And then the CIP provides specific development regulations for the coastal zone needed to carry out the LUP. The CIP is referred to as Title 18 within the municipal code. So here we have an aerial, a close-up of this specific section of a much larger park. You know, the park itself is multi-jurisdictional. It's owned by multiple jurisdictions and cities. It's owned not by the city. It's actually owned by Parks and Rec. But there is an existing playground here. It's been there according to at least our historical aerial photos since 1990. According to oral accounts from local citizens, it's been around since at least 1985, if not longer. The existing playground has gone through improvements which occurred in 2016 and 2017. Those were exempt from needing to go through a coastal development permit because it was just maintenance and repair, which is covered under the LCP. However, any project which has new structures going into the coastal area does require a coastal permit. This one didn't qualify for an administrative after consulting with the Coastal Commission. And this is one that requires a coastal development permit, hence why we are here. So this proposed new structure is going to be going into this grassy area here. Here we have some photos of the existing site. This is that grassy area I just showed the aerial of. So this is looking from the, when you enter into the park. You have the restrooms over on the right. And so this is standing right in front of the restrooms, looking towards the lake, which is, I'm going to call it south, southeast. And then here you have looking east towards the playground and the church behind. So this is all park area. This is looking south towards the lake as well. And then here we have looking north towards the DMV and shows more of the existing play structure. So the new proposed structure is going to come in here. Not all of this grass will be taken out. But it will be flush with the new paved area because this is an inclusive play structure. It's meant to be accessible for those with mobility issues. So here we have the approximate layout of where the new subsurface is going to be. This grass will be retained along here. And then this will fill out and connect with this park. This existing concrete is going to transition here from the existing substrate, which is wood chips, to the new ultra flex, flex ground. It's a safety poured feature cushioned ground specifically designed for this play structure. And then this concrete burial will wrap around, but will be flush, not raised like the existing one is around the park and connect this. So it's just going to be a fold out. So this is where the, the flex ultra flex is. It's a ported-in placed safety surface system composed of an upper layer membrane and an underlying impact attenuation cushion layer. So it's just to added safety for any falls. The actual whirl itself is completely flush with the ground. So someone who has a wheelchair can just roll right on. Along with the inclusive whirl, they are proposing to install what is called calypso drum set. It consists of bells, the calypso drums, and xylophone. And these are all provided by Miracle Play Systems. So the inclusive whirl provides ease of access for people of all abilities. The roll surface platform is at ground level with no need for ramps or transfer mechanisms. It features bench seating and a large platform surface that exceeds ADA requirements for turnarounds. The musical structure is a clay panel meant to design and stimulate imagination and creative play. It allows for musical expression with the molded drums that can be struck. The xylophone has a beater allowing children to strike graduated aluminum keys, creating musical sounds. The musical structure is the tallest of the new play structures and will stand at four feet six inches tall at the highest point. The whirl itself has a fall height of one feet six inches. So as I mentioned, it's going to be located within that existing grassy area. The grass along here will be maintained. This will be the ultra flex system. And then the ultra flex will be flush with the new concrete. So along with this new structure going into the park, there is also regular improvements that are going to be happening to this existing concrete pathway to the ADA parking space just to improve the current path of travel, do a little bit of widening, and ensure that this park can be accessible for those with ADA. This improvement for all the concrete is exempt, but since it's all happening at once, we wanted to show the full scale of what's going to be impacting the site while this is being done and the full scope. So there are specific findings for coastal development permits. And then we also have further, further specific standards in this Laguna Grande sub-area. So the park, the coastal areas are split into different areas, and this is within the Laguna Grande. Normally, the height within the coastal area is 24 feet. However, anything within 100 feet of Laguna Grande can't exceed 20 feet. This is consistent with that. It's four feet six inches at the highest point. And the project also utilizes natural colors such as blues and greens that have been designed to blend in with the surrounding habitat. And the project proposes to improve the existing public access pathways that lead from the parking lot to the main recreation trail as well as the new proposed ADA playground. So those are just some specific requirements that we're supposed to consider and which the project is consistent with. It's also a permitted use. A playground recreation is a permitted use within the coastal parks and open space zoning designation. The one area where there is some extra consideration is in regards to setbacks from environmentally sensitive habitats. So we have environmentally sensitive habitat areas marked here, this emergent wetland. And so there is emergent wetland along the edge of the property here. However, this is 69 feet from the edge of the Laguna Del Rey Lake. And then it's approximately 30 feet from the proposed playground structure to the environmentally sensitive habitats. It is supposed to be 50 feet. However, this buffer is possible to be reduced for public recreation facilities, which this does qualify as. And in such a case, the buffer can be reduced to 25 feet. This is consistent with that as it's maintaining a 30-foot setback. And then it will also still have the existing fence will remain and the existing concrete pathway, which prevents people from going into this protected area. So those are just some of the specific additional standards that need to be followed. And then we have the specific actual findings for approving a coastal development permit so that the establishment is not going to be injurious to the property, the neighborhood, or the general welfare of the city. So this CDP is for the installation of inclusive play structures. The new play structures and ADA pathway improvements would be located within an area developed with an existing playground and pathways. The proposed improvements would not alter or adversely affect the adjoining Laguna Park areas to the east, south, or west. The next finding, the subject property is in compliance with all rules and regulations pertaining to zoning, subdivision, and all other applicable titles of the chapter 17 and 18. And the proposed improvements will be located within an existing playground or recreation area, which is permitted use. And the placement of the proposed playground equipment is permitted within the LCP, and there are no existing violations on the site. The next condition, proposed project conforms to public access and public recreation policies of the Coastal Act. While the project is being constructed, it will temporarily interfere with the existing access point located at the site. However, it will only occur during construction, and there are multiple other access points to get to this playground beyond that one pathway. The proposed development is in conformance with the plan's policies and requirements of the LCP. So the proposed development protects vegetation in that the city will require the use of best management practices to ensure that the construction area for the proposed improvements will not disturb any environmentally sensitive habitats. The design, location, and operation characteristics of the proposed development is consistent with the LCP as it is for creation use. The proposed improvements will provide a broader visitor serving needs as the new playground will be ADA compliant. It will improve visitor serving needs located within the Laguna Grande Park and make it more inclusive. The proposed project is for the implementation of improvements to an existing playground and recreation area that would be designed to blend with the existing play and visitor serving uses. Said improvements would not detract from or impede the city's ability to develop uses that encourage the establishment of coastal-related uses. So along with the CDP coastal development permit, there's also Board of Architectural Review. Any project which is done with city funding needs to go through Board of Architectural Review. The proposed project is consistent with the quality and design and scale of the existing park and playground. It will be ADA compliant, and the colors they have chosen echoes the existing colors of the playground and the natural setting. They've chosen blues and greens. There is no exterior lighting proposed, and the park is closed after sundown. And then conditions of approval for Board of Architectural Review. The proposed play structure meets the development standards provided in the zoning ordinance and the local coastal program. The proposed use is consistent with the other recreational uses found within Laguna Grande Park and the immediate site area. The site is already developed with an existing playground and restroom, and this is a natural extension of it. And there will be no significant visual impacts that designated view sheds. I didn't include the view sheds map in the presentation, but the location of this proposed expansion does fall outside of the designated view shed areas listed in the local coastal development plan. So based on staff's presentation and the resolution, we do recommend approval of the coastal development permit 2101 and Board of Architecture Review permit BAR 2104, subject to the findings, evidence, and conditions of approval, provided as attachment one, the draft resolution, and attachment two, the project plans. For the next steps, we do need to send final, final notice of action to the Coastal Commission within seven days of this final action. So if this is approved, I will be putting that together and making sure I put it in the mail. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer. And that is all.
Commissioners, anything for staff?
Yes, I have one thing. I noticed that in reading the report, it said that in building this, they're going to be removing the four benches that currently exist around the, the current playground. And it didn't indicate where those benches would go. The one thing I have a little concern about is having used that park a lot in the past is not to have all the benches at one side so that some kids might be in blind areas of the of the playground areas. So are there any plans for where those, those benches will go after their move when they put in the new materials?
I am actually not sure. I believe, I do know that the, the three benches on the northern side, so closer to the parking lot, I think those are just going to be moved outside of the concrete and put on the grass there. I, I don't believe that bench number one is being, I don't think they specifically called out a specific location. It's just to be determined by the city according to the demolition notes.
Okay, well, as, as long as the city has in mind, you know, what I just mentioned, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Yes. This is predominantly a, a public works engineering project, but the coastal development permit requires planning commission review, but we'd be happy to work with that. That would be a minor improvement of relocating a park bench, which shouldn't need further CDP approval.
Anything else, commissioners?
I have a couple of questions real quick for Dana.
Okay, Mr. Evans, go ahead.
Dana, I didn't, I apologize being ignorant of this, but when you were going over the, you called it the coastal restricted areas. I forgot maybe that term. And you were showing, you were kind of pointing at the pink area, but you were also pointing at some red lines. And I apologize, I, I just kind of got lost in all of that, and I wasn't sure exactly what that all meant.
Of course. Here, let me, let me bring that back up.
And just while you're pulling that up, my other question is on the flexi path. I, I understand that why that's going into the area with the ADA needs. Is it going to blend in with the current wood chips? Or did I miss it that the wood chips are going to be replaced in the existing area and replaced with the flexi path?
So yeah, no, it's going to, to transition here. So here at this point, where the, the new, this, this is the point at which it will become, it will transition from wood chips to the ultra flex. So on page one. Sorry, I pulled all my sheets apart and now I can't find the one. C point, C point oh two is where it shows all, all the curb cuts, including the transition from wood chip play area to surfacing section. So it's going to be as flush as they can make it. So technically, someone, I mean, there's a ramp here could go on to the wood chips. I don't know how mobile it will, it will be. It's wood chips. And, and I don't believe at the moment that there's plans to replace the wood chips with, with the ultra flex. It's just the proposed new addition that's doing the ultra flex and the wood chips will remain. I don't know if it'll be something they want to do further down the line or not.
Which page, which page were you referring to?
Uh, C zero point two in the plans.
Zero point two. Okay. So will that void any warranties on the ultra flex?
I, I don't believe so, but I honestly do not know the, the answer to that. There's specific design regulations, details that were part of the final attachment six regarding the ultra flex. And then.
My experience with the ultra, or you know, with similar type product is they never last as long as you think they are just because kids are kids and all sorts of fun things happen out there. But especially where you're going to have a transition like that where it's different materials. It's just hard for me to envision that that's going to work real well. So I just was curious how that was going to work. Anyway, that's not that important, but you know, I, I would just think that public works should look at that and make sure that they're not going to avoid any warranties or any issues.
I'll definitely pass that on to Leslie Lanchero, who's handling the project for engineering and public works.
And then. Anything else?
Oh, I'm still waiting for the explanation on the restricted area.
I'm sorry about that.
There's a, there's a, almost a better map, I think, if I'm reading it right, on the packet. What page it says 37 in the packet, but I don't know if that's what you, it's not exactly the same as what you're showing, I don't think.
Well, that actually, it, it is because it's all, the, the red outlined area, whether it's the hashed or the solid, this is the exact same footprint. This is the border of what we call our coastal area within the city. There is one other section that's, that's further north. But I only included the actual relevant section because this is this coastal area. And so within this coastal area, you have actual zoning designations which are different from the, the base designation. This is just open space according to the zoning map. But within the actual coastal area, we have different zoning designations, and this is designated as coastal parks and open space. But then I also just wanted to show because these are all multiple parcels. This is not one parcel. These are you know, 50 some odd parcels pieced together to make this larger parks and open space. But then we have our habitats kind of broken down. So you can see, you know, we aren't putting this inside, you know, a woodland. We're not putting it inside the emergent wetland. It's going inside an existing residential park, which is this pink designation here.
So when you use the, the, I, I've forgotten the terminology, but we, is that the biological study area that has to be protected?
No, no, that, so the biological study area was the area that they, that they did their study within. So they're like, we're interested to see what habitats are within this coastal boundary area so we can identify them and know, you know, where's a wetland, something that's environmentally sensitive versus a residential park, which is not environmentally sensitive habitat.
So is it the, the broken, well, the broken black line is the city limit. So I, I'm just confused as to where where the coastal commission would be concerned about this encroaching.
So they're concerned about anything within the red dotted line. The red dotted line is synonymous with the actual coastal boundary. And then in this specific map, it's showing you the biological study area, which happens to be the exact same layout as the coastal area. Because they were only concerned about identifying habitats within the coastal area.
Okay. More research. Homework. Thank you.
Of course.
Commissioners, anything else for staff? Okay, seeing nothing, we will open it up to public comments since there's no applicant. Anybody wishing to speak on this can come forth for two minutes. Please state your name.
Please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you are calling in from a phone. Chair, we do have one.
Okay.
Diane Nielsen, you now have the floor for public comment.
Thank you. Good evening commissioners. I'm Diane Nielsen. I am a seaside resident and I am so anxious and excited to have this done because it's been being worked on for over two years now. And it, it will be lucky if it gets done within a three year timeframe. We don't have accommodations for people with disabilities in most of our parks. And it's so important to get this started and off the ground. And the the report that Dana gave was excellent. I appreciated all the detail. Laguna Grande Park has always been kind of a a mystery as to who who belongs to what. But I would strongly encourage you to vote yes on this. So we can get going on this project and get some more diversity in our public parks. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much for your comments, Ms. Nielsen. Chair, we do have another member of the public wishing to make public comment.
Very good.
Franco Pacheco, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. You can hear me right? Oh, the clock started, so the answer is yes. Kind, I'm a seaside resident. I serve on Parks and Rec. And like Ms. Nielsen, I really encourage you to vote yes on this. This process started two and a half years ago before I'd even moved back to seaside. It is a loving felt project put in by many members of Parks and Rec that has been stalled and delayed and stalled and delayed and half promised and half completed. I'm so excited, we're finally getting close to it. And I really hope you can help us push it towards actually being completed and being something that benefits the children of seaside rather than a checklist on a political box that someone brags about getting done. Anytime we have even one citizen that is a young person or child in our community that cannot access the same resources or have the same fun or get the same joy is a time when we're failing as a city. And I think not having the resources or availability of a area to play like this is a huge failure and really speaks how far behind we are. So I really hope you step us in the direction to get caught up. I really hope you step us in a direction to give that young person a chance to play with their friends and have the opportunity to feel like they're part of our community. And I really hope that this isn't something that we hold up or pause based on minutia or small arguments that continue to push this back. Because the more we wait, the less likely it'll happen. And I want to have it done before my child can walk or I'm dead. So please consider voting yes. Love you all, you're fantastic human beings. Have a great night. I yield the rest of my eighteen seconds.
Thank you so much for your comments. Chair, there are no other members of the public wishing to make public comment at this time.
Very good, public comment is still open? For anybody that has not. Public comment still open? Seeing nobody, we will close public comment and bring it back to the commissioners. Howdy, guys. Mr. Dodson, why don't you go first?
Let me know, am I echoing? Because I just heard some echo go off. I guess not. Anyway, I think this is a great addition to the the overall parklands area there in the greater park area. And I don't really see anything that I would consider anything close to a major objection. So I'm very excited that we can hopefully move forward on this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Dodson. Commissioner La Micah.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea because every time I drive by there at different times of the day, you know, I see a bunch of kids playing in that in that area. So I'm all for this, especially if they're, you know, putting ADA or putting in things that, you know, for kids with disabilities, like this is a great idea.
Thank you, Mr. La Micah. Mr. Evans?
Looks good to me.
Thank you. Mr. Han?
Well, I have no problem voting for it.
Very good, Mr. Silva.
You know, this, this seems like such a no brainer to me and it just baffles me that it's been what, two and a half years? Maybe going on three years in in the making. You know, just a couple of comments. I'm sure people can nitpick, well, should it be this color? Should it be this toy or whatever? And I, I would hate to think that perfection has been the enemy of good in this process somewhere along the line and it's delayed it for this long. But I think, you know, the other unfortunate fact is that, you know, a city doing something as benign as putting in a play structure in an existing park that is meant to be accessible to handicap children. It it's such a duh moment, right? And I think it's an unfortunate evidence of sort of the breakdown of of government and bureaucracy that this has to go through like the coastal commission and it has to go through. I mean, I get that that maybe the the board of architectural review needs to look at it. I get that there's already been a recreation committee that's had input. But the layers of stuff that we have to do to approve something that is so obvious and basic and necessary and good, it's just unfortunate that 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 it takes so long. So pardon the soapbox, but you know, yeah, stamp of approval, let's get this done and moving forward already. I'm on board.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. Again, I am totally for this also. One thing that I would like to see if we could do, like Mr. Silva or Mr. Evans about keeping the two materials apart. It just seems that we're we're really holding back the handicap people because we should be putting the surface all the way through the whole park. Because the kid in the wheelchair should be able to get over to all the other equipment as well as this because he may be able to pull himself up on on a play equipment, whatever it might be. But that would be my only thing is I would sure like to see the whole thing have the same surface so that a wheelchair could go across it because you cannot get a wheelchair to go across the the wood chips. The wheels go down into the ground and it's just a mess. We've tried that before. And that that's my only thing. I sure would like to see that same throughout so that somebody's over at that wheelbarrow or the the merry-go-round, they can roll over if their friends are just playing on the swings and stuff and they feel more like they're part of it. That that's my only thing.
I will definitely pass that along. And that's definitely something that could be done after this is approved and wouldn't need to come through this entire process to do that changeover because that would be an improvement or repair and maintenance to an existing play structure within the existing footprint. So that would be exempt from needing to go through all this for that.
Thank you. Dana, can you tell me what what is the square footage of the new part of the park?
It is six hundred and thirty two, six hundred and thirty square feet.
So it's basically twenty one by thirty.
Basically, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I would sure like to see that if we can get that form, Dana. That way, anybody can go anywhere within that play structure area. But other than that, do we have a motion?
I move to approve local coastal permit, coastal development permit, L C P twenty one dash oh one and board of architectural review application number V A R twenty one dash oh four.
I second.
Okay, all in favor? Hi?
Hi.
And we will have a, what's that, Dana?
Same roll call.
Oh, no, we were going to do that. We always do this and then we have the roll call. But go ahead, Dominique.
Commissioner Han?
Hi.
Commissioner Silva?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner La Micah?
Bye.
Commissioner Dodson?
Hi.
Chair Owens?
Hi.
Your motion passes.
Very good. And now did that, did that include the B A R and the?
Yes, it did.
Okay, just making sure. Thanks, guys. Okay, next. Do you? I've got page nine, but purpose of recommendation.
Discussion items.
Do you know what number that is? Because
I don't have the pages. It's number eight.
Eight, A and B.
Eight?
Not page eight, it's it's item eight.
It's page three, it's page three, if you want to look at the packet.
Okay, thank you. Okay, discussion regarding two planning commission meetings per month. Currently, the planning commission meets once per month. Really? Staff would like to propose returning to holding two meetings per month, canceling any meetings where no item were on the agenda if agreement, planning commission was in the normal pre-COVID schedule and meetings would occur on the second and the fourth Wednesday of each month. Didn't we do that already this month?
We held a special meeting earlier this month, which means we needed to send out emails to make sure everyone could attend and we would have a quorum. And so if we move forward with this, we can stop needing to do those and just assume everyone will be here on the first or second and fourth Wednesday unless then we get a cancellation notice due to no items.
Okay.
Isn't that the way it used to be done?
Correct.
Prior to COVID.
Now, I would, I would speak in favor of that. These long meetings where there's a couple of agenda items, you know, they can, they can go as late as nine or ten. And when you've got kids, it's not as ideal situation. So I prefer to have more meetings with maybe lesser items on them.
Mr. La Micah?
I'd like to see us go back to the second and fourth Wednesday. And if, again, if there's nothing to discuss, just cancel the meeting.
Very good, Mr. Evans?
Sorry, I was muted there. Absolutely, all for it.
Commissioner Han?
I'm all for it. I have no problem with that.
Commissioner Silva?
You know, I don't care one way or the other, whatever pleases everyone else.
Very good, and I am for it also. Anything that'll cut down going till nine or ten. Even though I'm retired, you know, I fall asleep real easy. So let's take a vote on this, guys.
It's just a discussion item, I think.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was looking for a number to give you, so.
But does it ask for a recommendation?
It sounds like recommend to return to two meetings. And Dominique, do we need to put that on the next agenda to be officially voted on? Or can we just return to two meetings?
You may resume your original meeting schedule.
Fantastic.
Yeah, because we never voted on it to take it away.
We do have a meeting on May twelfth then, heads up.
See how you are. Okay, reports from commissioners.
Oh, you still got B. Discuss regarding the potential to resume in-person meetings for planning commission starting in July.
Can we put this off till the June to the, do you need more time than just the June meeting?
Well, this is even just a discussion, like if, so it's city council is planning to return to in-person meetings in June is their goal. And so this is just a discussion as to whether or not commission is interested in returning to in-person meetings. Perhaps not, and they want to continue virtual or maybe a hybrid version. Some of you want to be in person, some of you want to be zoom. We can, this is just a discussion on how you feel. So I was just letting you know, council is moving forward. We haven't been told that we specifically have to, but we figured it'd be a good time to, you know, open the discussion if that's something we're interested in or not.
I don't know about the rest, rest of the commissioners, but I'd like to go ahead and let the the council go out there and see how they do.
Let them be the guinea pigs.
Exactly. I don't know about you guys, but I feel very safe in my home. And also it's much easier, especially for you guys that have to go work.
Oh, yeah.
You walk from here and you go to bed, you know, it's but I don't know about you.
Fall asleep right here.
I'm still kind of leery about having a group of people in a room.
I'm not comfortable with it.
Thank you, neither am I. So, Mr. Dodson?
Well, I guess I'm the contrariest here. I like the idea of getting out of a house that's very busy and people talking right around dinnertime and getting to a place where the focus is on just the meeting itself. I think if we did have it at the the council meeting building, it would still, all the, all the standards for indoor meetings would still be in effect, I'm sure. So we wouldn't have any of those meetings that occasionally happened where the whole place was filled. So, you know, within reasonable care of those, those guidelines, I actually prefer to have it at the
Thank you, sir. Mr. Evans?
Yeah, I'm with Keith. I would much prefer to have, you know, the live experience with the people that are there. I think I get more out of the presentations from staff, you know, sitting there on the dais. My only real concern would be, you know, what the protocols would be. And if the, if the council is going to, you know, have a vaccination requirement or if they're going to have a distancing requirement, a mask, blah, blah, blah. So I would be, I would be open to the idea, but I'd want to know more of the details of how the city plans to best protect not just the commissioners but and staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Han?
I don't really mind, I don't really care either way, it's fine with me. But it's more convenient for me at home, so, but whatever. But I think we should wait until maybe a little bit further down the line, like July or something, you know? Give it a little bit more time so we can see how the council does with, you know, let them do it first. You know what I'm saying? So that's my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Silva?
You know, being at home is extremely convenient, but convenient, but I I do. You know, I miss a little bit of the decorum and and the formality of us meeting. There's, there's sort of a reverence that comes from that and I I do appreciate that. It's easy to get distracted at home. So I'm vaccinated and I have no personal concerns about coming in person. But I also recognize, and I think it's important with the whole COVID concern is is different people have different levels of caution and concern. And so I think, I think we kind of have to go to the lowest common denominator in that. And, and you know, if if one of our members has, you know, a greater health concern or a greater caution, you know, I I want to defer to that so that we're not pushing anybody out of their comfort zone. But I also agree that with the proper protocols, and I think the science is moving obviously in our favor. And we've got, you know, you know, we're seeing greater levels of herd immunity and more immunization and things like that that I'm okay with the gradual move back to that as it's appropriate for everybody in the group.
Thank you. I agree. I, I, I miss the city hall. I'm just leery, like Mr. La Micah, that there's just so many unknowns. You know, and as well as anybody, I'd love to get back to city hall. But like Mr., I think the city council is going to start in July. If we're going to do it, I'd like to look at it in August. I mean, they're going to start, there's in July, let's see how that goes. I mean, oh, they get a lot more of the public coming to their meetings, but that's the only fear that I have. I trust everyone I'm looking at here. My big worry is the unknown. And for those of us that have certain conditions, it, you know, it's why we've been so careful this, this last year in something. But I am definitely for going back, but I would like to wait. Give, give the city council, I mean, we're only talking two meetings. Give city council July, no problems, I'm all for going back. That, that's just my, my point of view. But as this is just a discussion, it, and who knows, come July, we may see that this is dropped because as well, I'm sure that everybody here has been vaccinated or it um, and who knows, come July, we may see that this is dropped because as well, I'm sure that everybody here has been vaccinated or and uh, we're ready for it. I just want to make sure that there's no unknowns for us. So is this through Dana or is this through Dominique?
The hand raised is Dominique.
Okay. Well, right now, it's just a discussion, so there's nothing to vote on, correct?
That's correct. I just wanted to add to your discussion that the um, discussion and the feedback helps us prepare for the commissions that are interested or show some interest in returning to in-person or hybrid meetings. Um, so just hearing the discussion today will help staff create the plan that will allow us to possibly um, have meetings in person, um, once again. So the feedback is very helpful.
Thank you. So, number nine, reports from Commissioners? Anything, Commissioners? Okay, reports from staff?
We do not have anything at this time.
Okay. Are they still looking into the exit there out of the gas station at um, Costco's new gas station?
Yes, Gloria was following up. She's um, out sick today, but have her.
Okay. Very good. Okay, um, is that it from staff then?
Unless Dominique has anything, there's nothing further from planning.
Well, I'm still wondering about the um, uh, in and out.
I am too.
So, because it's still.
Gloria also. Yeah, because, go ahead, Dana.
All right, yes, and Gloria um, has been looking into that one as well. I haven't gotten an update recently. That one's a little bit harder because we don't appear to have the minutes or the recorded, um, the recorded meeting um, available for that. So we can't even go back and look at the minutes to see what was discussed. But it is being looked into.
You know, this happened with the well that was dug by Fitch Junior High. I don't know if any of you, I, I think you were on the committee when we voted to have that test well put in so that they could test the water. Supposedly, the well would only be there every, like, twice a year. And now it's a full-blown pumping station for Cal-Am with multiple ten-inch lines coming out of the ground. So obviously, this note-taking with our planning commission is a problem. Because it was stipulated that the pump would come, it would be there for just a checking of the water in the well, and then it would go away. And instead, right next to the school, they put pumps that run all the time. And uh, it was definitely in our minutes of the time not to do that, to be a temporary thing, and it, I, I don't know, I, I definitely, I see our minutes now, and they're, they're definitely showing more and more of what we say within the minutes. So hopefully, we can work on this so that uh, we don't have any more problems like that.
The last few minutes have been done, done, done by me, um, just due to circumstances with city clerk leaving, leaving, but you know, Dominique will be handling minutes, I believe, from now on, but I'm happy to continue working with her to kind of, typically, we do action minutes. Um, it's been easier now with recorded meetings where I can go back and actually listen to the meeting. Um, which is very helpful, but harder with past meetings where if there is no recording and there are no minutes, it's hard to definitively say what's happened.
Yeah, because we definitely had tape, or they had tapes on it. You know, we, we're talking twelve years ago or whatever it was, but um, no, I appreciate the uh, the better auditing of our minutes, definitely. Okay, anything else from staff?
I have no items. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
Mr. Dodson's made the motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
And Mr. Lamica's second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Do we need a roll call vote, Dominique?
Not to adjourn.
Okay, thank you. Okay, guys, well, thank you, and we'll talk, we'll talk to you on the next meeting, guys.